Okay, am I on? Okay, let's see, I was told I need to speak deeply into the mic. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in a notice of March 8th, 2022. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertising the Nutley Sun on March 8th, 2022, and posted on the district website. Can we all rise for the flag salute place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Balsamo.
Here.
Mr. Pataglia.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton.
Here.
Mr. DeMayle. Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Cornicella.
Here.
Can we have an approval for the minutes, please? All in favor? All right, we have some presentations for this evening, and we will start off with the audit report from 2020-2021. We have Mr. Vinci here with us today. Do we need to go down into the audience for this presentation?
No.
All right, the floor is yours, Ms. Avinci.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. The report that we will be discussing briefly tonight is for the 2021 school year, and there's obviously a reason that this has been delayed. The state failed to provide information that we normally have received during the school year, was not received until the end of January. Normally, you accept this report around the holiday season, hence this is why the reports have been filed late. And that's not just for Nutley, that's for every school district in the state of New Jersey. Financially, the district ended up with surplus greater than $9.1 million, which was about, when I say surplus, it also includes your reserves, about $800,000, $900,000,000 greater than the prior year. I think when you look in relation to your budget, you're about 12%. So you're probably within average of where most districts are for reserves. We do have quite a few with higher balances. So it is a healthy amount of surplus and reserves. The only thing I want to bring to the board's attention is that after June 30th, the board did withdraw over $2 million of your reserves to fund expenses of this year. So from a perspective of today, you're probably just over that $7 million threshold. The second report we provided to the board and administration really dealt with our findings. We met with the board's finance committee last week and the administration. We did have some findings in the audit. Two or three of the findings dealt with technical matters with state and federal grants, and a couple dealt with procurement compliance. None of the findings are of a significant matter. Mr. DePisa will be providing the board with a corrective action plan for the board's review and acceptance. So if there are any specific questions regarding either of the reports, I would be happy to entertain those questions.
Any board members have any questions? Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going, the next presentation, I'm going to hand over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Julie Glazer.
We are very excited tonight to be able to honor the Citizen Education Teacher of the Year awardees from the Nutley VFW. I would like to ask, you want everybody to come down, sir? Yes? So I would like to ask our honorees, Mrs. Polynice, Mr. Vick, Mrs. Franacola, come on down. We're going to come down with you. I am so thrilled that your families could be here to see you get this prestigious award this evening.
Oh, there she is. Hey, Ms. Polynice. How are you? How are you? So for those of you who know me, I don't really do speeches, but you know, I love hearing myself speak, so. It's a great honor. We in the military were usually voluntold to do things. When I saw the names on these plaques, I was like, no, I gotta be the one who does this, who does this. You know me, as a kid, I only wanted to do three things all my life, and that was be a soldier, be a cop, and someday be a teacher. I've gotten two covered, so hopefully someday, you know, I'll be standing in front of a classroom, sharing my knowledge. These are really, really, truly special to me. You know, if you've gotten plaques before, you look at them, and you're like, oh, it's just something else to dust. But when you look at these, remember from old Sarge, this is us saying that you are heroes among heroes, and we recognize you as that. So first one I would like to offer to Ms. Polynice.
Let mom take a picture, and then we'll take a picture.
I would like to do a group one at the end.
Did you get, did your family get all your pictures? We might have to spend some time. We have lots of families.
Yeah. And these are in no particular order, but you know, ladies first, you know, it's our here, Alabama. This Franacola?
Do you want me to take one for your mom?
I can send, I can send it to him.
And Mr. Vick.
Timmy, wait, Timmy's got to take.
Thank you. And thank you all for having me.
But I do want to say to you, Sarge, you are already a teacher, teacher leader, right?
Yes, thank you.
Teach from where you stand.
Okay. We are going over to our superintendent's report, again to, back to Dr. Julie Glazer.
Well, can you hear me? Yes, there we go. In addition to our Nutley VFW honorees, we have lots of other good news tonight, too. English Language Arts Coordinator Brooke Benavides was nominated as a New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association Visionary Leader of the Year. We celebrated her nomination at a dinner last Thursday night, and then she and I presented at a conference session on Friday to follow that up, creating culturally responsive, equitable classrooms and curriculum through the lens of content. This is the work that's been happening in our English Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science classrooms to align our curriculum and resources to be more inclusive. So very many congratulations to Brooke. Honor her. In addition, I know he's back there in the booth, and you can't see him, but IT Manager Ian Vemeister has been named the Educator of the Year by the Nutley J.C.s. He's going to be celebrated at a dinner at the Valley Regency on April 13th. I'll just tell you all, tickets are still available. A very well-deserved honor, Ian. Congratulations, back in the booth. And in addition, that night, we're going to be celebrating Krista Crumrine, Outstanding Young Woman of the Year, Commissioner Tom Evans, our Outstanding Civic Affairs Leader, Mr. Daniel Geltrood, Businessman of the Year, and Sam Corella, our winner for Public Health and Safety. So we're very much looking forward to celebrating. And even more good news, our Nutley Winter Guard finished third in the Monroe competition. Our indoor percussion also had a really good showing at that competition. Our Nutley High School Wind Ensemble received a silver rating at the NJ SMA Region One Concert Band Festival, and we had wonderful performances of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. We want to give special thanks to our culinary students for making and serving dinner to our senior citizen neighbors before the first show. It really made for a special run, and thank you to everyone involved, because it was terrific. More thank yous, oh, we can clap. And more thank yous to our Nutley Educational Foundation, Mathnasium, math coordinator Leanne Martin, and Director of Curriculum Janine Locan Solo for really fun and successful Family Math Night. It was the second one, and let's hope we can make it annual. It would be really wonderful. Thank you to all of them. And then coming up this Wednesday night, March 30th, is the next in the series of parent academies. This one is on the topic of district security updates and a program called Be Smart Gun Safety. This one was really brought to us by one of our parents, and I'm excited by that, Andrea Pagarski. She is Moms Demand Action for Gun Safety, and during that parent academy, she's going to be sharing the Be Smart Home Gun Safety Program in addition to the district security updates from me, Mr. Ferrera, and Ms. Boyle. That meeting on Wednesday night will be virtual, starting at 7:00. The link is on the district website, but I think we'll also blast it out again before the meeting, so everybody can join. And just finally, and I can't believe I'm saying this already, but the district will be closed Friday, April 15th for Good Friday, and Monday, April 18th for Easter Monday. Spring recess continues through April 22nd. Okay, said, can't believe it, but here's hoping it gets a little bit warmer in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. We're going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Banja.
Thank you, Mr. Cornicella. To continue with Dr. Glazer's good news, I do want to remind some, the staff and students that we're starting our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment testing window. It started in some buildings and will continue throughout April. I do want to remind the public that we have moved to a district calendar called Our School. You can find that under the Event Calendars, District Website, Event Calendars. You'll see everything from athletics to musicals, concerts, PTO events, tricky trades, talent shows, booster events, virtual events, practices, ACT, SAT testing. We're really making an effort to put everything in one place district-wide. You can filter by the building, so please check that out. We're looking to get more events up there and working with the PTOs on that. To Dr. Glazer's point, there's a lot of great things going on in district. She mentioned the parent academy that's going to go on on Wednesday. This is our fifth monthly installment of the parent academies, and we're trying to do at least one or two more. I know we're looking at maybe like a gifted and talented type topic, as well as some things going into the summer slide and things of that nature as we move towards the summer. I also want to bring your attention, looking at the calendar today, that we have our World Language Honor Society induction on Tuesday, April 12th. I would like to recognize Mrs. McNish and a student, Elizabeth Crispin. They are going to the DECA National Challenge in Atlanta, Georgia. That's a great accomplishment. She got there by placing very high at the state one in Atlantic City, so we're excited about that. And lastly, for my report, I'd just like to mention athletics starting up. We have a couple new sports this year. We have flag football for girls. That will be starting up on April 14th. We're partnering with the Jets. We're one of, I believe, 12 teams in this area to work on flag football in the spring. We also started boys volleyball. That's exciting. We have two levels of that, and that's starting up very soon. Baseball on the first and lacrosse on the sixth. And the softball team returned from their spring trip from Florida today, so we welcome them back to district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Banja. We're going to move along to our Board Secretaries' report, Mr. DePisa.
Thank you, Mr. Cornicella. The revised preliminary budget that's on the agenda tonight reflects a 2% tax increase and also reflects the reduction in state aid of over $418,000. The preliminary, the preliminary 2022-2023 budget was submitted for technical review on March 24th. All backup documentation was emailed and hand-delivered to the county office on March 25th. The preliminary budget document and auditor's preliminary projections for the end of this school year, 63022, was placed in ed for the board's review. Our 2223 budget hearing will take place as part of the board meeting scheduled on April 25th as a presentation and a Q and A for the public for any questions on the budget. The Finance Committee will review the documents, meet with Central Office Administration, and communicate with the full board, and a final budget with final tax increase percentages will be in place by April 19th, because we need to advertise from the 19th to the 25th for the public hearing. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. We're going to turn it over to our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Perigi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we replaced the exhaust fan and ductwork in the cafeteria at Lincoln School. Up unit is up and running. We installed 16 new cameras, a new 57-inch monitor in the main office, so the staff can monitor the cameras at Radcliffe School. We replaced and reconstructed 80 mailboxes in the Radcliffe main office to accommodate for the new camera equipment. Gabriel Roofing made repairs of Washington Spring Garden and John H. Walker. All roofs are repaired and holding. Tim Coster is working with Montolo Electric, installing cameras at John Walker Middle School. We are working on summer project lists, work that will be done in-house. Maintenance Department is working on installing two replacement coils in room 206 and 200 at the high school. We are working on replacing the lights in the concession stand and the bathrooms at the Park Oval. We're also painting and fixing the stalls. We received quotes to paint four elementary auditoriums. We are working on the paperwork for the renovating of the gym at the high school. We have prices for flooring, bleachers, and painting, awaiting the estimate for the painting. The grounds department has started prepping for spring sports and spring cleaning around the district. We are having training on Wednesday for Schleg doors and locks. We are incorporating some of the town employees to, for the training process. We have seven of our staff and four of their staff attending this training. The oval lights and equipment have been installed. Nutley Township has inspected the work, and it has passed. We are waiting PSENG for the power hookup. We will follow up tomorrow with the process where that is. And we are currently looking for summer workers. The posting is on frontline under maintenance for summer custodians. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi. And we're going to move it on over to our student representative, Tatiana Freckleton. How are you?
It's on. Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Tatiana Freckleton. I'm the Vice President of Student Council, and I'm here to update you on what we've been doing in the school. During the month of March, we had a Basketball March Madness event, where there were teams of three that versed each other, and the event was a huge turnout, and the student council is planning on, planning other sports-related events. Also during the March, the month of March, our school had, is having like certain days throughout the week where there will be certain lunch items that represent a country. For example, one week we had polo, saltado, which represented Peru. And about two weeks ago, our school was having testing for juniors, and the freshmen were taking the PSATs. And since the fresh, since the seniors were not doing any testing, we had like an assembly where we discussed senior events such as prom, yearbook sales, ordering caps and gowns and more. For the future, we're, next week, we're having a blood drive on April 5th, which is hosted by Key Club. Our goal is to donate at least 100 units of blood, and we are celebrating our 20th year anniversary partnering with the blood drive. Also, each senior will receive a red cord to wear during graduation in exchange for donating blood. Our school is also hosting a war refugee supply drive that will be from March 28th to April 15th. Students can donate things like nonperishable food, men, women, and clothes, women's clothing, hygiene products, diapers, and baby wipes. These items can be dropped off in the principal's conference room. For the Women's History Month, we have a Hope Through a Care Drive. We're collecting cleaning products and monetary donations. Some examples of things people are donating are like laundry detergent, bleach, Lysol, and more. During the month of May, the juniors are going to have their formal dance in the school gym on May 13th. Also, the student council is planning on bringing out, bringing back the event of Night of Nations. Lastly, to close it all out, during the month of June, the student council is currently planning a Raider Fest, where each grade will get the chance to compete against each other in sports and academic events. Also, we are, we are having students from each grade, they're having the opportunity to design their T-shirts for that event, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Freckleton, thank you so much.
Of course.
That was a full, starting now, end of the year, everything's included.
Yeah.
I hope that's not any indication that you won't be back with us next month. If not, you're going to have to add some more details to that, but thank you so much.
Of course.
Very well done. Thank you. We're going to move over to our committee reports. We're going to start off with academic. We're going to look for Ms. Dancheck-Morton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on March 23rd. Ms. Locan Solo provided an update to the progress on the secondary social and emotional curriculum implementation. The district is in the initial stages of implementing Ruler, which has been developed from the Center of Emotional Intelligence at Yale University at the secondary level to pair with the CKCC program already in place at the elementary level. Ms. Locan Solo advised the committee on the implementation of a lunchtime language arts strategy program at the middle school. This targeted program will support students by increasing learning time and utilizing strategies designed to bring students to grade-level expectations. Mr. Banja provided an update for the March 18th Professional Learning Day. Following the district goals, teachers and staff in grades seven through 12 attended a presentation on culturally responsive teaching from Professor Fernando Niedek from Montclair State University. Teachers and staff from grades four through six attended a workshop on sheltered instruction, and teachers and staff from pre-K through three met with building principals to discuss progress on the social and emotional learning program. The local professional development committee is in progress of designing a district needs assessment to inform on the progress of this year's goals and create next year's district goals. Mr. Banja provided the committee with a recommendation for an increase to sub rates for the next school year. The rates include incentives for continuously working in the district, as well as adjustments for certificates and program needs. The district is also in the initial stages of organizing a sub fair in June to recruit substitutes and facilitate the onboarding process. Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banja updated the committee to the auditor's report and preliminary budget. Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banja updated the committee to the Yannick Oss secure entrance bids, which will be on the agenda for tonight for approval. The oval light project, as well as the Nutley High School Media Center renovation. Ms. Locan Solo reviewed professional development and field trip results. Dr. Glazer reviewed the grant application in conjunction with the Nutley Family Service Bureau, and Dr. Glazer, Mr. Banja updated the committee on personnel matters. Our next committee meeting is to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dancheck-Morton. We're going to turn it over to Administration, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The admin committee met on Wednesday, March 23rd. Dr. Glazer provided an update on personnel matters. Dr. Glazer reviewed a grant application in conjunction with the Nutley Family Services Bureau, also updated the committee on kindergarten registration, and discussed a family survey that will assess the re-registration process the district just completed. Mrs. Doy Moreno, Director of Special Services, and Mrs. Vidiello, Special Ed Supervisor, joined the committee to discuss the transition program at William Patterson University for post-grad students. Nutley is looking to join this. The rates include incentives for continuously working in the district as well as adjustments for certificates and program needs. The district is also in the initial stages of organizing a sub fair in June to recruit subs and facilitate the onboarding process. Mr. Banu updated the committee to the auditor's report and prelim budget. Mr. Banu updated the committee on the Yanacola School Secure Entrance bids, oval lights, as well as the high school media center renovation. Meeting adjourned at 7:45. Next meeting of the Admin Committee is to be determined. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. We're going to move this over to Finance now. Mr. Pataglia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on March 22nd. Gary Vinci and Lisa Schick presented on the 2020-2021 audit. Alexis Goldman from Solutions Architecture presented on three items. The bid for the Yanacola Secure Vestibule updates on the oval lighting project and the NHS Media Center renovation. Mr. DePisa distributed state aid notices from 2018 through 2021 and discussed the 2021-2022 audit findings and recommendations. The committee discussed the revised preliminary budget in motion and submission. Painting quotes were for various spaces districts ride were distributed along with Buildings and Grounds report. The committee discussed and approved for 20 -- excuse me. The committees discussed and approved for Feb. 28, 2022 Agenda, the replacement of the NHL bleachers and scoreboard along with the refinishing of the gym floors. Mr. DePisa distributed the Finance Agenda's motions on hand as of 3/22/2022. Mr. Banu presented a substitute teaching rate proposal for 9-1-2022 start and also explained the plans and details for a substitute teacher orientation to be held in June 2022. The committee was provided an update on registration post-survey budgets impacts for increased substitute pay. There is a meeting scheduled for April, but no date has been set yet.
Thank you, Mr. Pataglia. Last but not least, we have Policy. Mr. Balsamo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy Committee met virtually on Wednesday, March 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. The committee reviewed 34 policies and regulations in the area of teaching staff members, support staff members, pupils, and community. After review, 27 policies and regulations were moved to first reading. After review, the committee tabled five policies for feedback from Strauss Esme, our Board Attorney, as well as feedback from board committees. The committee reviewed the agenda for the April meeting. The next meeting of the Policy Committee is to be determined.
Thank you, Mr. Balsamo. Okay, we now come to the hearing, the portion of the meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we will allow questions or comments on reports, resolutions, and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulation 0167 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Prior to anyone coming up, I do have a list here. We have two people that did sign up to speak. But prior to that, I'm going to ask our attorney here, Mr. Lieblin, to make a public statement, and then from there, we will take our list of people who'd like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Carnicella. Yeah, the board wanted to be pro -- obviously, there's an incident out there that understandably everybody -- people are concerned about. But from the legal point of view, I have to kind of give you the parameters and be, you know, just about as much as they can or cannot comment on. On March 10th, 2022, the Nutley Board of Education was made aware of an incident involving a substitute teacher at Nutley High School. Said substitute teacher was immediately suspended that same date, pending investigation by the Nutley Police Department. The district was advised on March 15th, 2022, that formal charges were filed against this individual. Effective that same date, the individual was formally terminated from all employment with the district. This investigation and prosecution is ongoing, and the district continues to fully cooperate with local law enforcement and the Essex County Prosecutor's Office. Because this is an ongoing investigation and criminal prosecution, the Nutley Board of Education cannot legally comment on it any further. At no time -- it needs to be emphasized also, at no time prior to this incident was district administration or the board aware of any prior incidents involving this individual. Also, please note that all substitute teachers, as well as all teachers and staff and anyone coming in contact with children, are required to undergo state criminal background checks prior to any employment. Additionally, the State Department of Education Office of Student Protection continuously monitors the criminal background status of all employees. They immediately contact local school districts if any employee is arrested for any disqualifying offense. The district provide -- this was part of the prior statement that went out. District provided counseling and support services for all the Nutley High School students and staff who wished to make that available to them. Unfortunately, the Nutley Board of Education will not be providing any further comment on this matter at this time. All further questions on it really have to be directed to local police department and the Essex County Prosecutor's Office. Understand your frustration with this, but that's kind of my job as the lawyer to advise them that when something like this is going on, other than that, those facts, they're prohibited from commenting any further on it until it's all resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lieblin. Okay, so the first person that I have here is Mr. Evangelista.
Hi, Michael Evangelista, 283 Chestnut. First of all, thank you for the move to the new venue. The acoustics are much better here. Their sound system is better, and even I can hear everything that's going on. We do note, however, that there was no link on the website for a Zoom today, and we wonder if the board has decided to go away from virtual meetings or whether that was just an oversight.
So I did check with Mr. DePisa, who checked with our IT Director, and there was a link available. I don't know whether it was not posted on the website, but I'm assuming that it was available. I don't know--
It wasn't out there a few minutes ago.
Got it. Okay. I checked before the meeting because I know that you had spoke to me about it--
So we could expect to have virtual meetings available?
Yeah, the direction is the link's going to still be available. But I did try to check into it when I spoke to you before the meeting started. So I do know that there was a link available. I'm just not sure why it was not visible on the website.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, he can say something if he wants. Mr. Vienmaester, did you have something from the back?
So the link is in the normal spot. If you go to nutleyschools.org, at the very top, you'll see a link to the current meeting, and the video is embedded in there.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, so just Mr. Vienmaester said at the top, there's a link that you can click right on. Okay, next one on the list is Mrs. Terry Quirk.
Terry Quirk, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parent Advocacy Network. I too love this venue. Thank you so much for changing. I just wanted to tell you a little story. I had a parent reach out to me last week, or actually, it was the week before. She has a child who attends an out-of-district program, and she was looking -- because the child is out of district, another town, she doesn't have any friends in this community. So she was really looking for something for their child here, for her child here, girlfriends or whatever. Can we provide anything as -- can the district provide any like after-school experiences or anything like that? Would she be prohibited because she's out of district? My question is, is, I just want to be able to tell this mom something.
I'm going to tell you that that was one that I won't even make an attempt to answer.
Okay.
I definitely don't want to give the wrong answer.
No problem.
So I'm going to lean this either over to Dr. Glazer or Mr. Banu. Whoever raises their hand last gets to go.
I'm kidding. So I think that there are a number of opportunities for socialization. I think, you know, Parks and Rec has a huge number of programs. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, even though they meet in the schools, those are open to all Nutley resident children. Those kinds of opportunities might be a good starting point. I don't know if you have any additional ones?
I would just add, depending on the age of the child, we have various clubs at different schools, depending on the school, as well as, you know, middle school, high school. There are after-school activities for, you know, at those places.
Oh, okay. So she would be able to come here and attend them?
Depending on the school, yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, those are the only two that I have on my list. I'm going to ask if there's anyone else who wishes to be heard. They can come up now.
I have reached out to Dr. Glazer, but I'm going to ask again, I'm really concerned about the policy with transportation. My son is a five-year-old. He has an IEP in related services. It says that he gets busing. I was told that he will only receive the busing if he could be picked up and dropped off from my home. He is five. He doesn't -- he goes to school in the morning, so my request was that he be picked up and dropped off from that daycare. They're telling me no. When I read the policy, it states that arrangements can be made for children with an IEP. So I just wanted to get clarification on the district's policy.
So Ms. Baker, this is a student-related issue. Unfortunately, we cannot speak about that specifically. As far as a policy review, I was aware of the emails that have gone back and forth. The policy that you're referring to is our transportation policy.
Correct.
And that transportation policy, again, when we're dealing with special education, is something that is coordinated between the Special Services Department that we have. They align with the state and the county, as well as under the direction of the superintendent. If the superintendent has anything that she'd like to add to it, but at this time, we cannot make comment on administrative--
But you can comment on your policy? The transportation policy?
Yeah, the transportation policy that we do have in place describes how the district handles transportation.
Correct.
Okay? How that is delineated for a student with special services and how that transportation would be addressed is guidance through that policy, but it is also done through the Special Services Department. So although we have a policy that does discuss transportation, that the Special Education Department handles that specifically based on the guidelines from the state--
But the Special Education Department told me that it was a transportation issue, and when I spoke to transportation, they told me--
Correct.
No, we could go to your home. Well, maybe we could work something out and go to Grandma's house if that was the problem. If they could go to Grandma's house, why couldn't they go to another location?
So I'm going to -- is there anything that we can further discuss with this from your end, Dr. Glazer?
I can just -- I'm sorry, but I can only repeat that we don't offer courtesy busing and courtesy busing--
Even for a child with an IEP with busing under related services?
Yes, the IEP provides transportation, and the way that transportation is interpreted for us, because we have such a large population of special education students, we do our busing in-house, and there's a route, is it's home to home. And when you're told to Grandma, some people live with their grandparents, they spend most of their time maybe with a custodial parent, but that is, that is what those special arrangements are. It doesn't change -- oops, sorry. It doesn't change that we don't offer courtesy busing.
So a child who needs services?
Your child is still able to get services. We're still able to offer transportation--
Only if he's home in the morning.
From home to school.
A five-year-old would have to be home all morning.
That's all I can say at this time, but I know you're pursuing other avenues, so I hope you'll get those answers.
Thank you.
Hi, Matt Brown, 26 Woodland F. Two-part question. I would just ask for your assurances that in light of the pandemic and the post-pandemic worker shortage and issues that we are having, just ask for your assurances that proper background check and protocols are being followed. Sounds like, per Mr. Attorney, they are. Part two is, are we considering updating, reviewing, changing those, that protocol process, possibly going above and beyond a state background check because obviously it failed? Apparently, it only failed once, but once is too much. So I'm -- again, the question is, are we considering updating, changing, enhancing our interview background check process for substitutes?
So I'm going to kind of lean on our attorney for this, only because I know that if I was standing here and polled the board right now as to whether or not we should do everything we can to make sure we have the appropriate people in our buildings, I think it's going to be a yes from everyone. So I just want to let our--
It would be a resounding yes from everyone.
You know, yeah, absolutely.
Well, not whether or not we're doing it. Let me get more specific. What are we doing?
What we're doing is the, what every single district does, it's the top of the class in terms of criminal background history checks through the state police, through the county. Literally, there are no others that I'm -- and I do this in a lot of other districts too. There's no others that I'm aware of that would go above and beyond this. And if there were, I'd make a recommendation, but there isn't. Right. Who's the fingerprints? The background checks, the Office of Student Protection down at DOE? I mean, you get letters, the district gets a letter, like, you know, immediately if anybody gets arrested for anything. And that's like an ongoing thing. But literally, there's no others that I know of that would be enhancing. And if there were, I know this board and all of us would want to.
Okay, well, hopefully, increasing pay for subs is something that'll bring in a better crop. But, you know, I also hope that, you know, in addition to the background checks, someone's personally sitting down with these people and talking to them and trying to figure out what kind of people they are. That's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Brown, I think our Assistant Superintendent wanted to add a few comments.
Yeah, I want to speak specifically for you. We are looking at all our processes in-house. We are updating everything. Not that anything needs to be updated, but we're double-backing on, you know, what we do here in district with the criminal background checks. We are raising the sub rates. We're recommending that to the board. We're having an onboarding process. We're going to ask everyone to go through this process again for next year. We're trying to build relationships with colleges and universities to help get students out of their programs as well in our districts that sometimes leads to teachers for us. So we're doing all these things and working with our principals especially to also fill out, you know, paperwork to evaluate subs a little more closely and do those things as well. So I think, although, you know, you're looking for specifics, the district really is looking at every avenue to make sure this is addressed.
Okay. I actually think the college idea is great. I was a substitute teacher when I was in college. You only need 60 credits. You get home in May. School goes till June. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Come on up, Ms. Blue.
Hi. Wasn't planning on speaking and did not get the name of the mom who came up to talk about her child and transportation. Just a very quick question. Was there something in the transportation policy that changed in the past few years? My son was transported from Little Blessings in Nutley to Spring Garden and then also to Lincoln School from daycare and back and forth for a full school year. So I'm just wondering if something has changed since then. This is seventh grader sitting over there.
I, oops, hello? Okay. So I don't know when that was, but I do know that as the special education population has grown to 22%, it was no longer possible--
Okay.
--to be able to provide any kind of courtesy busing, and that's been--
But that's considered courtesy busing? Okay, that was my only question because I just heard that and my heart went out because--
Our heart goes out too, but unfortunately--
That worked for us as working parents trying to get our kids with IEPs and special needs--
Yep.
--to school. Thank you.
Thanks.
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. I was wondering if the article in the newspaper about the gentleman who was accused of masturbation, if that article was factual. if that article was factual, said that it was done once and then a second time? Is that true?
Ms. Rubino, I'm not sure, but our attorney had just put a statement out before we started taking public comment that we cannot make any comment on that particular issue at all. It's still an ongoing investigation with the police, and we are not at liberty to speak about it. Anyone else wishing to be heard tonight? Okay, seeing none. Let's move our resolutions. First one, academic, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions. One through five is written.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. De Pisa.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Cornicella?
Yes. Administration, Mr. Riley, please.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to move admin resolutions. One through four is listed.
Roll call, Mr. De Pisa.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Cornicella?
Yes to one and two. Abstain on three. Yes for four. Finance, Mr. Ferraro.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to move resolutions.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, I was just going to say, would you like to recognize some of the donations?
Yeah. What's that?
The donations that...
No, actually, I just wanted to just to make a clarification. I know Mr. De Pisa has made this in his statement, but the budget, again, is a preliminary budget. The committees are still working to fine-tune the budget, and if the budget numbers can be lowered, that's something that this board will look to do, but I just wanted to point that out again.
Just give me one second. I thought there was a couple of donations that we needed to recognize. Okay. Mr. Ferraro, would you... Twenty and 21, just to recognize the donations. City of Nutley Public School District.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, for the... Number 20 and 21.
Yeah. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts a donation from the Nutley Music Boosters Association of a Wagner onboard field podium at a value of $2,938 for the Nutley High School band program. And also, number 20, I skipped down, sorry. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts a donation from Solutions Architecture in the amount of $1,500 to the Nutley High School Culinary Club for the senior dinner and a show.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. De Pisa.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Cornicella?
Good through, one through 12. Abstain on 13. Good for the rest of them. I guess 14 to 24.
24. I got it.
Okay, policy, Mr. Balsamo.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move policy resolutions, one and two, as written.
We need a second.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. De Pisa.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Cornicella?
Yes. Mr. Riley, would you take Personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move Personnel Resolution, number one, as listed.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. De Pisa.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Cornicella?
Yes. Okay, any old business to come before the board? Any new business? Okay, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Big shout-out to the Cub Scouts. Me and trustee Scotty had the opportunity for an Arrow Light Ceremony. It was wonderful to see the boys move up into their next level. It was a huge accomplishment for those boys. I was glad to be a part of it, and we will also be recognizing them at the next board meeting. So really appreciated the invitation, enjoyed spending time that night with the boys. Congratulations again, and we'll see you next month for some recognitions. All right. Second one, the Peacocks. St. Peter's, the Peacocks, and our Nutley, our Nutley-born Doug Egger... I thought they were going to, I thought they were going to keep upsetting. I really did, even though they were playing the last team that I had in the bracket. But congratulations to them. That was an amazing accomplishment. I was glad to see that Nutley was represented in part of the lineup there at St. Peter's. So congratulations to them. I know it's not the way they would have liked it to end, but it was an amazing run for them. And that's all that I have. Anybody else have any comments? Anything that they'd like to say?
Motion to close.
We need a motion to close. All right. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.